I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're going to have Brother Mike Reeves to come and give us our invocation and ask you that you will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Let us stand.
Now that everybody's in their proper seats, I would like to say again on behalf of the Ministers of LaGrange and Troup County that we always counted it an honor that you ask us to come and to pray over y'all. Father God, we do thank you for this great day that you've given to us because it's a day that you made. And because it's a day that you made, we're just going to rejoice and we're going to be glad in it. We ask your Spirit will touch our leaders of the city. We thank you for their leadership, their dedication. We thank you for the convictions that they have. We pray today that you will bless them and their families and watch over them as they do the city's business. We thank you for our law enforcement that are here tonight. We ask your protection upon them and their families and also your blessings upon them. Thank you for a community that we can come together as friends and family and a place that we feel safe in raising our children. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to have our swearing in of our new councilman by our city attorney, Mr. Jeff Todd.
Mr. Childs, if you'll join me up front.
Sir.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of councilmember of the City of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. So help me God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Richard Mike, we want to say we were so thankful and we're happy that the Ministers will come every meeting and because we do need prayer. We need a lot of prayer here. All right, you've been giving a copy of your agenda. I'd like to receive a motion and second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have it so carried. We have employee recognition tonight. Chief Deckmar will come at this time.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protam and Council. 2016, we began a partnership law enforcement wide in the county with the Chamber of Commerce to do valor award recognitions. And as a result of that, though, the life-saving award is only given to one officer or one public safety official for all the jurisdictions. And we believe that the significance of recognizing officers that embrace not only their training but duty and it results in the saving of a life should be recognized. So what we've done is since this past summer is research those incidents and we'd like to recognize those officers at this time. Mayor Protam, if you'll join me, I'll now turn the program over to Lieutenant Kirby.
On February 2nd, 2016, Corporal William Jones administered Narcan to an unresponsive male who was later transported to the West Georgia Medical Center where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Corporal Jones for his prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On May 30th, 2016, Officer Brent Story and Officer Josh Knowles performed CPR on an unresponsive male. The patient was transported to the West Georgia Medical Center where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Officers Story and Officer Knowles for their prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On June 5th, 2016, Detective Stevens Spivey and Corporal Mike Barton and Corporal Brent Story utilized an AED and performed CPR on an unresponsive patient. The patient was transported to the West Georgia Medical Center where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Detective Spivey, Corporal Barton, and Officer Story for their prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On March 17th, 2017, Corporal Eric Vaughn applied a tourniquet to a victim with severe leg injuries. The patient was transported to an area hospital where he survived his injuries. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Corporal Vaughn for his prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On July 20th, 2017, Officer Unrikey Parks administered CPR on an unresponsive child. Child was transported to the West Georgia Medical Center for treatment where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Officer Parks for his prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On July 21st, 2018, Corporal William Jones performed CPR on an unresponsive person until emergency medical personnel arrived on scene. The patient was transported to the West Georgia Medical Center where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Corporal Jones for his prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. On August 3rd, 2018, Officer Joshua Clower and Corporal Mike Barton responded to an address in the county in reference to a person shot in the pelvic area. When a tourniquet was not sufficient to stop the bleeding, the officers applied Quick clot directly to the wound. This controlled the bleeding until the victim could be flown to an Atlanta-area hospital where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Officer Clower and Corporal Barton for their prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange. And finally, on December 19th, 2018, Corporal Eric Vaughn administered CPR to a male who had attempted to commit suicide by hanging. The male was transported to the West Georgia Medical Center where he made a full recovery. The LaGrange Police Department is proud to recognize Corporal Vaughn for his prompt action and professional engagement consistent with the high standards of the LaGrange Police Department and the City of LaGrange.
This concludes the awards. This runs through 2019 and we'll let the conclusion of 2023 bring you 2021 and 22. Thank you.
We'd like to commend all of our offices for doing such a wonderful job. And we were so thankful to have all of you here tonight in council chambers. And as we get ready to go into our public hearing tonight, we'll give everyone that has something to say, we'll give them an opportunity to a certain point. Our public hearing to receive comments on a board and planning and zoning appeal, recommendation on requests to rezone four parts of Bryant Lake Boulevard from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood residential, quarter mixed medium-density residential to quarter medium-density residential, and quarter mixed use to quarter mixed use. Are there anyone that want to speak on this? If you would, come to the mic, state your name, who you are. Each one is given two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Meredith. I live in the Bryant Lake community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be heard on this matter of utmost importance. Tonight you're being asked to consider an application that would significantly alter the future of the Bryant Lake community. And we all appreciate the time and careful consideration of our city council on this proposal. You'll hear from both myself and some of my friends and neighbors, and all of us have a very important stake in this question. As you consider the application for rezoning, there are a number of arguments, both for and against adopting this change. I'd like to frame my argument in this manner, against adoption. My neighbors and I have all made a significant investment in homes in the Bryant Lake community. For many of us, this represents the largest single investment we will ever make. My wife and I look to the value of our home as a major contributor to our financial security during retirement. In other words, the value of our home is critically important to our future standard of living. Under the existing parameters of the Bryant Lake Master Plan, we all welcome this new development and believe that it will have a positive impact on the value of our property. But without these restrictions, there will be several negative consequences and impacts, both on our community's standard of living and on the value of our property. So allow me to quote from the guidance that you've all been given with regard to the consideration of an application. And I'm just going to cover two of the points that there are eight points. When considering the application, the following standards should be applied. One is whether a proposed rezoning will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. And the second being whether the property to be affected by a proposed rezoning has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. Let me point this out. When the developer acquired this property, they were aware of the restrictions that were in place. There is already a very reasonable and very viable economic use under the existing master plan. And in fact, construction has already begun. This developer stands to make a substantial financial gain if built out under the current standards. Now, if there were no value to be derived under the current zoning standards, then it would be completely reasonable and necessary to make the change. We would certainly understand that. But I believe what the developer is asking for is carte blanche to maximize their financial gain with no regard for the impact it will have on the existing community and adjacent property. If built out to the maximum density and with the lower building requirements, this addition will have a substantially negative impact on the value of the existing homes in the Bryant Lake community, the value of my home, the value of all of our homes and of all of our futures that live in that community. So I urge you to vote against this proposal and in favor of the Bryant Lake community. In closing, I believe that governments have an obligation to protect the interests of their constituency. Elected office is a trust. We ask you to stand up for the rights of your constituency and not rubber stamp this proposal. Those of us who live in the Bryant Lake community will drive by this development every day of our lives because there's only one way in and out. And it will stand as a very stark and constant reminder of how you vote on December 27th. And we ask you to vote with the members of the Bryant Lake community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. My name is Tom Conway. I also live in Bryant Lake neighborhood. I just have a couple of quick points that I would like to make and reiterate what the previous gentleman said. First and foremost, to me, the people that purchased these plots of land, Keystone Custom Homes, I believe is the name, they knew the rules and regulations, the current zoning which was in place at the time they made the purchase. I feel like they should be held to those standards and the standards not be changed after they're purchased so as to increase their income, so to speak. As far as a specific reason that I'm against the proposal, I'm a retired educator myself. And I look at these review standards here, and I look specifically and most importantly to me at number four, whether the proposed rezoning will result in a use that will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, including the volume and nature of resulting traffic changes, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. It's my understanding that at least the elementary school that serves our neighborhood is already overcrowded. The addition of this subdivision is going to put a burden on that. But if you increase the density, that burden will be more than the school can handle. The Board of Education, I'm sure, is looking at this and are aware and they have plans in progress, I hope they do, to fill the need. But we don't want to overburden the schools. So I ask that you vote against this change. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Missy Kirkland, and I am also a resident of Bryant Lake subdivision. And I'm here to voice my concerns about the rezoning request of that property within the Bryant Lake Master Development Plan. I want to echo a lot of the same sentiments that Mr. Meredith spoke about and this gentleman spoke about also, as I also am a retired educator from the Troup County School System. So I agree with all of his points that he just made. I do want to say that if the rezoning is granted within our community, there will potentially be over 1,300 residents attempting to come and go from our neighborhood. And as Mr. Meredith said, there's one way in and one way out. And there's not a traffic light on Hamilton Road right now. So 1,300 residents on Bryant Lake Boulevard potentially every day. This will present a major increase in traffic and it will adversely affect our neighborhood. And as Mr. Meredith stated, the property as it is currently zoned has a very reasonable economic use. When we purchased our home in Bryant Lake three years ago, we knew that Bryant Lake was part of a master development plan. And we felt confident that that would offer some protection for our investment. And our home is our single largest investment that we have made ever and probably is the biggest investment that we will ever make. When Keystone Custom Homes purchased their property, they also knew that they were purchasing property within a master development plan. And it is my opinion that their only intent in seeking rezoning is to maximize that space and increase their profits. And by doing that, they will increase their properties at my expense and at the expense of all of the other residents within Bryant Lake. We're asking city council to please vote no to this rezoning request to protect our investments. We are the ones that are invested in LaGrange and Troup County. We live here. Our children go to schools here. We are invested in churches here. We are the ones that pay taxes in this community. We have an investment in this community, not Keystone Custom Homes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Lattimore. I'm also an educator living in Bryant Lakes. So a lot of my ideas mimic what the previous people said. My husband and I, Todd and I, live, are residents in Bryant Lake Master Planned Community. Before we purchased our home in Bryant Lake, there were many neighborhoods around LaGrange and Troup County we visited. The manicured, inviting entrance at the master plan of Bryant Lake drew us in. The two developers who have built in the neighborhood have done an excellent job of staying within the parameters of the master plan. So it was with dismay that we learned that Keystone Custom Homes is requesting a zone change for our community and that our city council was considering. The residents of Bryant Lakes made investments in their homes and neighborhood based on the promise of the master plan development that has been in place for years. The proposed zoning change brings up some issues I find concerning. The changes have to do with the higher density of homes planned than originally planned. With the larger number of homes that weren't planned for, you have, like I said, the influx of students into the school. I've lived in many neighborhoods where builders come in, they build huge communities, they don't take the schools into consideration. And as a teacher, we get an influx of new students that we can hardly handle. The impact of the traffic on that very few, if you've ever driven into Bryant Lake, it's very narrow. And so you put all of these, like I said, 1,300 people coming in and out of one entrance all day long, traffic, I mean, just the school buses, people going to work, you're asking for accidents, which is very sad. And like people brought up about the investment, this is the largest investment we make for many of us, is our homes. And that's what we bought it for, is a retirement home. And I feel like we're going to have our values eroded by all the situations going to go with this, this change. So we ask that you vote against Keystone Custom Homes and vote with the residents of Bryant Lake community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that opposes this? Yes, currently. And the reason we're doing that to sort of help our new councilman here, we listen to everyone that's in opposition, and then we turn it over and listen to those that are for it. And that helps the council to make up their mind.
Thank you. Thank you all for hearing us tonight. I'm new in this community. My wife and I moved here about six months ago. We moved here to be near our grandchildren. We moved into Bryant Lake because it was a beautiful place to move. The proposed, the new proposed development is completely outside of what was to be there. And the only thing I ask of you all is to do your due diligence. I grew up in Florida. I lived in Florida much of my life, and I know what unrestrained development does. That's why in Florida now, before you can build like this, you would have to do some impact reports and some impact studies. So I just ask you all to do your due diligence and know the impact that this is going to have on the streets, on the schools, on the environment, and on the economics. We know it'll be a good economic thing, but what else will it do? So I ask you to consider that and then vote your conscience on what is right. Thank you.
My name is Mary Glawaki, and I just moved to LaGrange from Coeida County just within the past year. And I moved from Coeida County. I had a beautiful house, lovely land, loved it. But to get away from the hubbub and to come to a place like Bryant Lake that was a little more low-key, beautiful homes, lovely people, and I'm very concerned about this new proposal from Keystone that will diminish what I saw when I first moved here and when I bought this home. So I ask you to please, please, look at what the proposal is, vote no, because we are very concerned, all of us, of what this new development and what their proposals are will do to our traffic, again, our schools, you've heard from other people. And it just, the, I just feel like it's going to be a mess. That's just me. So I'm really, really worried. And I bought this place because I thought it was going to be very nice, very comfortable. And now I'm having second thoughts, and I'm really unhappy about that. So please, please, again, do your due diligence, look at this, please look at all the aspects of what this could cause. Thank you.
My name's Paige Clifton, and I am a resident in Bryant Lake as well.
Pull that down.
I am a single mom, have a 14-year-old daughter, I'm a nurse practitioner, and I work about three or four jobs, so I work all kind of hours. And I say that because we bought in Bryant Lake not realizing that the master development plan meant that our house that we bought in a neighborhood three quarters of a mile off the road that I thought was going to provide us with a safe neighborhood away from all the hubbub like everyone was talking about was actually going to be developed into this huge community in front of us, which is not the reason we bought there at all. So this actually comes as a surprise to me and many of the other residents that I have spoken with. But I did a little research on this City of LaGrange's website today. And according to the city's website, LaGrange is a place that you and your family actually want to live. So what makes LaGrange different? LaGrange is not Noonan. I didn't buy a house off of Bullsbury Drive in Noonan behind Walmart, behind Kohl's. I didn't buy a house off of Whittlesey Boulevard in Columbus. I didn't buy a house in Atlanta. There are 24 international businesses in LaGrange. Once the companies are here, their employees and families enjoy the good life. That's what the website says. Bryant Lake is one of the most diverse communities in LaGrange. Many of those families from, that work at these international businesses, live in Bryant Lake. I can assure you that they bought in Bryant Lake for the same reason I did, and it's not to be behind commercial and massive other residential developments. All of the, you are at our HOA meeting, Mr. Childs, you know the sentiment of all of the residents of Bryant Lake. Mr. Arrington, you want to give back to the city that gave you so much. Look after your people. You're here to look after the people, not the developers, not the businesses. Show people that LaGrange is here to look after the people and be a good community, not just here for the money, for the developers. And I don't mean just Keystone. I mean all developers, that we need to be truthful with our constituents, our buyers. Mr. Gaskin, you came from Harlem. You were a hero operator. We don't want to live in the most densely populated area of LaGrange. We don't want 1,300 people pulling out onto Hamilton Road next to Troup High, next to Lafayette Christian, next to the other new apartments that are going there. They're already widening Hamilton Road. I'm just going to be blunt, the whole city smells like weed already. There's a shooting every week. Is this really what we want? It's not what I want. I mean, I don't want my daughter to, you know, grow up in that environment. That's not what LaGrange is. That's not why people come here. And that's what I ask you to remember. You know, yeah, education is very important. The middle school is overcrowded. Well, Dr. Gore, you're a doctor. Atlanta Medical Center is closed. AMC South is closed. It's hard to get patients transferred. We're going to have 1,300 other people coming in. Who's going to take care of them? We're on diversion at the hospital sometimes, you know, when COVID was bad. We have a hard time getting patients transferred out of the ER to other facilities. These are all things we have to think about as well. And I just hope that you guys will consider those things in addition to, you know, just what's not on the table.
Okay, if there's no one else that opposes this, someone else is coming?
Good evening, council. Thanks for hearing us this evening. Dr. Joy Baker, OB-GYN for WellStar, and wasn't quite sure if I wanted to stay in LaGrange when I moved here three years ago. So I rented for two years and just in August moved into Bryant Lake. The community is lovely. It's a wonderful place to live with great neighbors. When I heard about this development change, I was a little bit concerned, well, actually a lot concerned, because prior to buying, I actually sat down and looked at the master plans for the development and kind of decided if this was a place where I wanted to move my elderly disabled mom, who I care for, into and was there a good neighborhood dynamic and what were we expecting to kind of come into that neighborhood? And I think that by building high-density housing, we're going to run into all of the problems that you've already heard ad nauseam. But I think it's very important that we consider the impact, the impact on the schools, the traffic, healthcare. I can tell you, I just got here because I'm often double and triple booked. We have so many people that need appointments, who need care. And so by moving more and more people into the city, we're going to need to be able to support all of that growth. And I think that there are many opportunities for other places where more homes can be built so that we have adequate housing. But I think that what is being done or what is being proposed to be done with the Bryant Lake development is not something that will ultimately benefit the residents of the community or LaGrange. So I urge you to vote no.
Now, is there, okay?
Homework. Homework.
Thank you, Joe.
Council members, thank you so much for having us and allowing us to have so many speakers tonight. We want you to do your due diligence. In 2019, I do not believe that you had all of the accurate information when the zoning change was made. The foreclosure deed for the land at the front is one of, there's four parcels in that, but that was one developer's land of a master planned community, Bryant Lake. It had three master developers, a residential portion that was in the back, a town home or apartment developer in the front, and a commercial developer up front. The commercial developer ended up being foreclosed on, and in that foreclosure deed, it still had the master development plan, and that is in your homework that's in there that shows, in the foreclosure deed, it still showed that it was subject to the master development plan. There are three developers, two developers, me being one of those. I am a resident of Bryant Lake, and I'm the developer for the residential portion of Bryant Lake, which was the single-family residential portion. And in that, we have abided by the master development plan. Did y'all know that there is a half a mile of street on Bryant Lake Boulevard, and for the last 13 years, that the residents in Bryant Lake have paid $27,000 a year to maintain that street? We've played, we have paid to cut the grass, and we have paid to fertilize that road. So that is just one thing that y'all did not even take into account. Who's going to maintain the road going forward? Nothing was mentioned. So y'all made changes to one developer's master plan, or one developer's zoning, which affects everyone in the community. And in the documents that I have provided, there's a lot of information that should be taken into account. What was zoned in 2019? I would like for you to change that if you could, which I know legally you can't now, but it does not need to be made higher density from what was already approved in 2019. There's already approval for almost 1,400 units in Bryant Lake. Originally, the master development plan was 974 units. It still says that in my development plan, it still says that in LGI's development plan, and now his development plan says that he can build nearly four, that it can be 1,400 in Bryant Lake. So who's right? So, so are you taking away from the units that can be built in the original residential master plan and letting them build residence up front and taking away from the 974? Or is it an addition? So is it 974, is it 1,400 units that can be built? That wasn't addressed. So there was a unilateral decision and change in zoning that was made when there was three developers involved in this master development plan? And in your book, it's two of the master development plans, one for up front and one for the back. It was recorded and deeded that there's a master development plan and subject on both of them. So how does that go into effect now? That you have two different zonings in one master development plan? I talked to Dr. Schumate today, and Clearview Elementary is zoned for 600, or is that capacity at 650 students? Right now, they have 927 students. No, no, I'm sorry, told him to speak. There are 627 students at Clearview right now, capacity is 650. He said students would be diverted from Clearview Elementary to another school. And asking where, there's really not capacity anywhere else, there's a school that's being built, but I asked him, did he know that there is 50 lots on the ground at the back of Bryant Lake that I just finished that are ready to be built on? There's already 30 existing in Phase Four, say Phase Five, in Bryant Lake right now, and those are ready to be built on? And there's 276 townhomes that are for sale that are under construction, getting ready to go vertical? He didn't realize that, that there was more zoning requests to add additional housing in the front of Bryant Lake. He wasn't aware of it. And he said that they're building a new school at Rosemont that will be for 850 students, and that they may need to add on to it. So I do not believe that the due diligence was properly done by the zoning and appeal board. And I would ask that you reject this zoning request, turn it down, vote no, or send it back to the zoning and appeal board. That there are too many things that are not being addressed, and it's already going to be at capacity. There's going to be traffic issues, school issues. It is, already has economic value the way it is zoned, and I'm asking you to take all of that into consideration and to please read through all the documents that I've provided. Thank you all very much.
All right. We've heard all the oppositions. Do we have anyone that's for this development, if you can come to the side?
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, I'm Keith Newberry with Keystone Custom Homes. And if the clerk would mind placing the approved zoning placard up, please? I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to our neighbors in Bryant Lake, if you all will.
Speak to us.
Well, tonight, I had a totally different speech to give to you all tonight, when one of the neighbors in Bryant Lake told me that they didn't even know that this was approved, and that by right, we could go and develop this property just like this tomorrow. That they were led to believe that this property would remain wooded, or maybe a senior 55 development, et cetera. I don't think that the neighborhood of Bryant Lake or the neighbors understand that at the end of Bryant Lake, directly across the street of Hamilton Road, there's a 311-acre parcel that is zoned for industrial, that's been under contract for two years, and that any moment now, there'll be an announcement made of a major industrial activity coming out of the ground there. There will be a traffic light at Hamilton Road and Bryant Lake Boulevard, so there won't be any traffic concerns at that point. When we're talking about densities to the areas, what we're asking for is, we're landlocked where the single-family homes are. We have buffers to our right along the side of marshlands and wetlands that we can't build in. Right now, we have been approved for 148 houses. They have to be built exactly in this configuration. Therefore, we can't put an amenity in. So one of the complaints that Bryant Lake voted to put a gate in is to keep people out of the swimming pool. We can't build a swimming pool for our neighborhood without allowing for the restrictions to be removed. Across the street with the townhomes and the apartments, there are so many units we can build now, we're not asking for exceptional amounts of density to increase the density here. You may have 20 to 30 more townhomes, maybe, but when we put an amenity in, you're not talking about raising these densities by hundreds of units, as it's being told. There's a lot of neighbors in Bryant Lake that are afraid that we'll build cluster homes, or homes without garages. I think it's important that the council allow them to know that we're only asking to be treated like every other developer in this neighbor, in this neighborhood, and in this entire community, and allow for us to build under the UDO. We want the same rules that everyone else plays by. We don't want to be boxed in to where we can't provide amenities for our neighbors, but more importantly, with the large industrial coming across the street, it's going to dictate that that commercial frontage is going to become attractive. Commercial purchasers, restaurants, grocery stores, et cetera, drugstores, all of those types of services, need units, and they decide what they're going to buy based upon the number of roofs nearby. So if they want to protect their values, they want to allow us to have flexibility in the front with the commercial units, so that Pod C doesn't have to be a fast food restaurant, or that that front corner doesn't have to be a gas station, but it could be something else. Currently, if we don't remove the restrictions, we can't have any allowance or any opportunity to change what this land use plan prescribes. It's okay if we have to build to this, but if we're not able to get good retail up front and we end up with, who knows, cigarette, cigarette stores or liquor stores, how is that going to impact the Bryant Lake community? If we can't get the number of units, and we're not asking for a lot of units, and I don't think we're going to see a significant amount of additional units or additional densities. I think more importantly, what the neighbors of Bryant Lake need to understand is that you were told that this would remain green, and now for the first time, you're finding out that this was approved by Mayor and Commissioner in 2019, and it's been upheld in the courts. She makes a great point about the master plan community. I'm sure she didn't highlight this part in there that says that our property in the front would have to be annexed in to fall under the master plan, community, covenants, restrictions, and it never was, by written instrument. The property went under before the owners brought our commercial piece into these covenants. She wants to say it was an amendment. It's in the paperwork. It's in the paperwork. And you guys zoned this properly a couple of years ago. It went before the courts. The court struck down 12 or 13 of the 14 complaints immediately, as, as faults are a very loose amount of complaints, that the city council did what the master plan, community, covenants, and restrictions allowed for, and it allowed you to rezone this property as you saw fit to do. So you guys are being made to seem as though you didn't do your due diligence, when it seems that you did your due diligence in 2019. I think the biggest due diligence is that the realtors and the developers of Bryant Lake haven't been truthful with their buyers, because I've heard from a buyer here tonight that had no idea that this could be built. And she said that in their HOA meeting, that they had no idea that this was even going to be allowed.
We're, he's going to address the council, and we're going to keep our comments to ourselves. We've given both sides time, so this is that, his time.
I do want to remind the council that for many years, the city of La Grange worked on a, under a UDO that was not very good, and that allowed for haphazard development. And, and when our zoning was placed on the properties, it was considered a progressive zoning and a leap step forward for responsible and good development. So much so that you followed up a year later with a new UDO. We're only asking to be rezoned to the new UDO, so that we have some flexibility with the commercial properties and its usage, and that we have some flexibility to add amenity areas to our neighborhood, because, again, we're bound by wetlands. We can't build small, compact little houses. You have a UDO that prevents that these days. So there's a lot of misinformation about what we can do. You all know what's in the UDO. You all know what we can do under the UDO. And that's all we're asking that you do, is allow us to move to the UDO so that we can build to the market, so that we can provide the city of La Grange with the needed units, housing units that it needs to support all the jobs. This city is critical to this region. This city has rail lines and the busiest commercial freight airport within one hour of it. A hundred and some odd years ago, this city boomed as a manufacturing hub, because the leadership understood its position, the leadership understood the infrastructure here that allowed it to be a regional manufacturing hub for the Sun Belt. And with Scott Malone, Kelly Bush, Pat Wilson with the Georgia Economic Development Committee, and Governor Kemp coming here continuously, coming to the city of La Grange to applaud you all for the progressive ideas of bringing jobs to our state, providing homes for our workers, and providing an infrastructure within the city to allow all these things to work together harmoniously. This is the new US economy, modern, advanced manufacturing, and you guys specialize in it. You've already granted a number of units here. Allow us the opportunity to work within these units to make them more attractive for potential buyers and end users. We're not asking for hundreds of more units. We're asking for the ability to move things around within our property so that we can provide amenities for the apartments, and amenities for the townhomes, and amenities for the single-family residents. We talk about traffic and congestion. This is built on a four-lane boulevard. By all accounts, in any traffic study to be done, there is no greater feeder street or collector street configuration than what's already in place, which speaks to the foresight of the development when it was put into place. Are we going to widen it to six lanes because we're talking about having cars stacked up? Of course not. I mean, this is as big as it gets in any area of the country for residential mixed-use I really am disappointed to find out that our neighbors believed that our property was going to remain wooded, and were not told that this zoning has been approved. I'd like, if you don't mind, clerk, to show what, just a simple concept plan that we have thrown out or that we put together to demonstrate. This is not much difference. The difference you see is maybe 12 housing units, but a swimming pool, and parking, and an additional amenity area near the pond in the back. And we've tried to leave the commercial space as intact units, so that as the industrial across the street comes into play and brings upwards of 1,000 to 2,000 new jobs to the city of La Grange, that we can offer retail, commercial spaces that are sizable and that can fit the right kind of businesses to help La Grange move from a one-exit city to a two- or three-exit city, because it's coming. Your leadership has put this in motion long before Bryant Lake was rezoned. This took place when '07, whenever you decided to bring Kia here. You made a conscious decision that you were going to reignite this community as an advanced manufacturing job hub for the region, and you've done a fantastic job in doing that. And we're only asking that you allow us to be on an even playing ground so that we can develop this to what works best for the city of La Grange. Adding 12 more houses doesn't change anything. Adding 10 to 20 more townhome units doesn't change anything. Deciding whether or not we can put a CVS, or a local grocer, or something that might fit on two or three acres, instead of having to be earmarked for self-storage, or boat rental, or something along those lines, doesn't make a lot of sense for the people behind us. Doesn't make a lot of sense for the people behind us. They don't want those mom-and-pop burger shops that last for two years and go out of business, and now you have a small building sitting there vacant. Talk about property values, nothing will plummet your property values more than having empty storefronts along the entrance of your community. Without units, and without the flexibility within the commercial districts, that's what we'll end up with. Cigarette outlets, liquor stores, another oil change spot, not favorable to the many hundred of people, hundreds of people that'll be behind us. Now, they've been speaking to populations in school. I think we heard from Mark Coschell, that he's been in contact with the schools, and the schools are prepared for this growth. Growth is not catching anyone in La Grange off guard, at all. You all are prepared for it for decades now, and we're not talking about substantial growth and significant differences. We're talking about flexibility within property that has been lawfully rezoned to include multifamily, single-family, and commercial districts. Again, I think there's a lot of soul searching that needs to take place with the Bryant Lake neighborhood behind us, because I think many of those neighbors were led to believe that this was not ever going to be developed. And so they bought homes in there thinking they would drive three-quarters of a mile to a neighborhood. And then when the townhomes popped up, people started asking questions. The only reason this is an issue is because there's a possibility to stop someone from doing something, which could prevent the developer behind us from financial gain, or to create competition. 148 to 160 housing units is not changing the game in any way, guys, and we all know that. 12 houses, 15 houses, because we can't build any more than that, the UDO will not allow it. The UDO will not allow us to build cluster homes. The UDO will not allow us to build homes with on-street parking. Nor do we have any intentions to do that. We plan to build to the UDO quality construction to provide the Bryant Lake Long Cane Creek development with the requisite number of houses that it deserves, because why is the city of La Grange going to spend millions of dollars to, as former mayor said, to create abundant infrastructure to help support Scott Malone, Kelly Bush, Georgia Economic Development Committee, the governor of our state? Why are they going to be bringing these large corporations here to set up shop to do business?[1800.57] do business here if we're not going to utilize the properties that we have zoned to be utilized? Why are we wasting our monies? Why are you guys wasting your monies? And I don't think you are. I just think there's a lot of misunderstandings here as to what could be built here and what should be built here. And that's things that that neighborhood has to work out. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Since I was referenced, I would like-
Ms. Kendall.
-two minutes to rebuttal since I was specifically referenced in his-
Come to the mic. And we're, after your statement, we're gonna close the public hearing out because we've heard on both sides. And I want to thank you all for coming and sharing this because in order to have a healthy community, you have to speak up for your community. So I'm gonna hear you and then we're gonna close the public hearing out.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. What I want you to keep in mind is this is a master development plan. So what he's asking for is to fall under the city UDO. So there was land available down the street on Hamilton Road. There's land available on South Davis. There's land available all around LaGrange to build under the UDO. He didn't buy land anywhere in LaGrange. He bought it in Bryant Lake. There, if you look right there, his, his land is, or the developer's land, Keystone's land, is behind that Bryant Lake pillar. It says Bryant Lake right there on each side, or on the right side of the entrance to Bryant Lake Community. It's a master plan community. We ask that you look at this, and you have already zoned this property and made it where he could build commercial and residential, and you put in place a lot of the restrictions that were already in place in Bryant Lake. But you allowed him, you allowed the developer, and then it was sold, that you made the zoning so that they could build residential because their argument was there was not a demand for commercial in LaGrange and that they did not have an economic demand for commercial, so they requested to change it to residential, to multifamily and single-family. That was approved and you put restrictions in place so it would not adversely affect the rest of the community. And we ask that you continue to keep that in mind, is that they should not be allowed to just be considered to build under the UDO. They're not just anywhere in LaGrange. They are in Bryant Lake. And we welcome them. I own a real estate company. We need more housing and we want quality housing to be built. One of the requirements is a two-car garage without on-street parking. There's lots of changes that, there are significant changes between the requirements in Bryant Lake and the UDO. And so if he would like to build high-density housing without garages and that don't fall under Bryant Lake's master development plan, then we would, I'll be glad to show him land if where other, I, Steeplechase, you know, we've got other land that is not inside Bryant Lake that could be built this way. And so I ask that y'all consider, this is inside of Bryant Lake and to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll consider that public hearing closed. Now we're gonna receive comments on the board and planning and zoning appeals recommendation to increase window sign coverage. For those of you that would like to exit at this time, you can do quietly. If not, we'll consider that one closed as well. All right. All right, I'm trying to wait until- Thank you all for coming.
See what you got yourself into, cuz. Get you some of this.
Now, what we're getting ready to do now is petitions and communications. This right here is where the council will approve or reject all these.
Yeah, delegation day is 101.
Oh, thank you.
We keep you straight.
All right.
Might take all of it.
That's right.
Keep it in the road.
We have a delegation tonight. Now we come to recognize our graduate, graduating class of LaGrange 101. LaGrange 101 is a free, six-week citizens' education class that offers community members an opportunity to experience an inside look at the City of LaGrange government and help to develop, inform, and involve citizens. This class began Monday, October the 3rd and wrapped up Monday, November the 14th. We would like to thank the following engaged citizens for taking an interest in locating and, in your local government, rather. When you hear your name called, please come up and receive your certificate and take a picture with us. Steve Jeffries. This is Ms. McCamey's niece. Al has great antiques. Ms. Lily Fuller. She Mark. That's a pretty color. Thank you so much. Well, I thank all of you for your service to LaGrange and thank you so much for going through the class. All right, as we come now to petitions and communications, we have a notice for claims for damages filed on behalf of Jason Hunter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. This involves an automobile accident. The second claim, 9B, is actually the same accident, so if you want to vote on these together, that would be fine. Staff would recommend denial or to our insurance company.
Motion to deny, move toward our insurance.
A and B.
A and B.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have it, so carry. Board and planning and zoning's appeals recommendation on a request to rezone 703 Lincoln Street from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Costa will give this report.
Evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Consistent with our discussion this morning during the work session, yesterday our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that a parcel located at 703 Lincoln Street be rezoned from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be scheduled for Tuesday, January the 10th.
Motion to call for a public hearing.
Has a motion, probably second, we would call for a public hearing. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have it, so carry.
Thank you.
Council report, and the councilman has a report.
City manager.
Oh, city manager.
She's next, that's right.
Councilman report.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Councilman Leon Childs here. He's been a, been a pretty familiar face around here for, for the years that I've been on council and now getting set aside, so congratulations.
Thank you, dear. Thank you, dear.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
No report, all right. City manager report.
Just two tonight, Mr. Mayor. We have financial statements for November as well as the payment of bills over $2,000. I don't have any particular comments, so we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
No comment, okay. Resolutions, considering, consideration of the approval of the proposal, LaGrange Logistics redevelopment plan and to create a tax allocation district, TAD.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As we reviewed this in work session this morning in detail, staff would recommend approval to create TAD. Item 11B also follows along with item 11A as it relates to intergovernmental agreement with the county as well as the school board.
Motion to approve A. What are the other ones?
A and B.
A and B.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Has a motion, probably second, that we will approve A and B. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have it, so carry. Authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute a First Amendment to the power purchase contract.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this was discussed in work session this morning. It relates to a solar contract. Staff would recommend approval of the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, so carry. Authorize the call for, of a special election.
Yes, sir. With the office of mayor vacant, resolutions attached for approval tonight to call for that election, which would be held March the 21st, 2023. Qualifying fee set at $600. Qualifying would begin January the 23rd at 8:30 a.m. and close on January the 25th, 2023, at 1 p.m.
Motion to call for special election.
Second.
I have a question for the city manager on that. Is there any particular reason why Monday through Wednesday is a good schedule?
We were trying to do it in time for the ballot builders to do what they need to do on the county side to build the ballot, so this was the latest we could do that. So we worked in conjunction with the county to make sure that we could get the ballot built in time for, you know, we have early voting now, so that tends to have to push things up a little earlier in terms of scheduling things.
And so my question is, the county will be running this election?
Yes, sir.
I've got one, one more question, which is with the timing of, of the qualifying and the scheduled city council meeting, could we consider changing the city council meeting at all? That's just a question, whether we might consider doing that later.
You could certainly do that, Dr. Gore.
Guess we could decide that later.
One of the thoughts was that we could still have the council meeting on the 24th. Existing council members wanted to qualify, they could do so on Wednesday morning and then, you know, by qualifying, that would vacate their position on council. That's kind of one school of thought. The other, could, we could move that meeting up a week.
Is there any potential thing already scheduled for the meeting on the 24th that would really matter?
Looks like you just scheduled a public hearing for Lincoln Street on the 10th, so the action item would follow that with a vote on that Lincoln Street item.
Isn't that Mayor's Day also the week prior?
That's that weekend, I was gonna say.
Mayor's Day is the weekend before, so it's that Friday before and goes into Monday, which is the 23rd, is the Mayor's Day GMA summit.
I would, I would do the, I would caution that, that Noah, our attorney Jeff Todd has looked at these dates and everything was in line with working out and by moving it, we need to be careful.
We would want to reassess anything that we do that modifies what we've discussed. This all fits and works.
Yeah, because we were, we're being in Atlanta for the Mayor's Day thing and we always come back on that Tuesday anyway for council meeting. That's something we've done for years.
I withdraw my request. I just had those questions, but it doesn't seem to be too important, so I withdraw that.
All right, call for the, oh.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have it, so carry.
Hold on. You gotta speak up. It's recorded. You're gonna have to say aye.
He's learning.
No, you're gonna have to-
Love for the spotlight to be the jab, dude.
It just has to be done.
All right. Authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Hogansville and for mutual aid for assistance.
Again, Mr. Mayor, we discussed this at work session. From time to time, we offer our services to different municipalities in our region. This would just memorialize that contract specifically as it relates to GIS services that we could provide.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have it, so carry. First reading to delete sections 30-5-5 regarding shooting galleries.
An ordinance of mayor, council, and the City of LaGrange to amend the code of ordinances so as to delete section 30-5-5 regarding shooting galleries to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
To rezone four parcels on Bryant Lake Boulevard.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on Bryant Lake Boulevard and owned by Keystone Custom Homes to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
Increasing window sign coverage.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city, to amend the sign ordinance so as to modify provisions relating to window signs within non-residential districts to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
Amending the retirement plan.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the retirement plan for the employees of the City of LaGrange in accordance with and subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the attached adoption agreement, the general GMAB's master plan document, and any amendments thereto, to modify the plan as to the city manager to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
What we did was, the first reading of these right here is, we don't vote on those now, it's just the first reading of it. And then when we come back to our next meeting, we'll have a second reading on these and then the council will then vote it up or down. That's what we did. Now, this is another, we've already had public hearing on the UDA text amendment. Now, this is another, we've already had public hearing on the UDA text amendment, so we're going to have a second reading of ordinance, UDA, UDO, I'm sorry, the text amendment.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend zoning ordinances of the city to allow commercial gardens within the TNR zoning district as a permitted use, to allow cottage developments within mixed-use zoning districts, and to provide minimum floor area therefore, to clarify dwelling minimum floor area in all other districts, to allow unified development plans for certain properties under common ownership, to allow solar farms as a permitted use within the CPGI district, to modify front porch dimensional requirements for certain building types, to amend garage orientation requirements for townhome dwellings, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix and effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign, ayes have, so carry. That passes.
Oh, one, one thing before we adjourn. Do we need to do the Parks and Rec Board issue that wasn't put on the agenda where I'm, I'm asking to resign from the Parks and Rec Board and because of my appointment to the economic board? And by doing so, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Leon Childs, our new council member, to take that position.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Turn.
I have no objection.
All right.
And I just need a second on that for anybody.
Mr. Gaskin, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Mr. Childs, you're now on the Parks and Rec.
You got a meeting next, congratulations.
You got a meeting next week.
Okay. All right, closing comments?
Anything for the key. For our good news tonight, we want to congratulate and welcome our new councilman, Leon Childs. We would also like to invite everyone to our city of LaGrange birthday party on Lafayette Square this Friday, December 16. That's our incorporation day, and that's going to be at noon. The public is welcome. And we also would like to celebrate our 2022 LaGrange 101 class, the mayor wants, thanks for staying. We want to thank them for their dedication and being part of this citizen class, and we're going to show you a video.[1693.33]